At this time, I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education Special Call Board Meeting for Thursday, July 30th, 2020 to order. At this time, we're going to have a moment of silence because no decision this big needs to be taken by any kind of guidance from both.
At this time, I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education Special Call Board Meeting.
I want to make sure that you can, please pray for those making the decisions tonight, and all of those that are affected by it as well.
For Thursday, July 30th, 2020.
So at this time, we're going to have a moment of silence. At this time, we're going to have a moment of silence because no decision this big needs to be taken by any kind of guidance from both.
At this time, I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education Special Call Board Meeting.
I want to make sure that you can, please pray for those making the decisions tonight, and all of those that are affected by it as well.
For Thursday, July 30th, 2020.
So at this time, we're going to have a moment of silence.
At this time, we're going to start the public comments portion of our meeting.
At this time, we're only going to schedule that 30 minutes. Needs to be taken by any kind of guidance from both.
At this time, I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education Special Call Board Meeting. We are not finished with our public comments. We have to board more emotions to continue the public comment. And at that decision, we're moving forward now. At this time, we're going to start the public comments portion of our meeting. So I will turn it over to Andy Brian to read our public comments only. At this time, we're going to schedule that 30 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, and I would like to address the name of the board member who is going to start our public comments. Amy Rosser, 2104 Wolf Trap Place Sanford. Have you thought about the mental health of staff who can't work? We can't start the public comments portion of our meeting without Andy Brian to go through the comments. As a school counselor, how am I to support and be my job or maintain the partnership between students and teachers? As the mental health of students, Amy Rosser, 2104 Wolf Trap Place Sanford, I'll be school until I get to play with my friends, to raise my vision, to deal with friends. I understand it's important to teach in person if this isn't teaching like the young teacher. It would be nearly impossible for a teacher to also follow the guidelines to the safety of students. At the mental health of students, Amy Rosser, 2104 Wolf Trap Place Sanford, I struggle to think about, I struggle to think out my new children, my new work in the school. I understand there is an end of experience, engaging in one place, staying in one game. It would be nearly impossible for a teacher to also take you to places where you can't be. Thank you. Gwen Babcock, 2306 Brownstone Drive Sanford. This year will begin my 31st year as an educator, my child will be learning, and all of their learning, and gave me the desire to become a teacher, nearly more than anything. I have to say that I am so proud of my school and leadership, and them there. I've been working a few hours in my classroom, but I'm concerned that all the members there have been all to every level, literally and figuratively. They made all extra desks, tables, chairs, even toilets, even when the cars have faced their native road jobs, from home to leave. And yes, there were lots of other ways to tackle that, to see how we can settle in that place. Help me envision myself and my students in all that we have to face. Literally, the space where we will get to know each other, and build friendships, and bond is, we learn a lot of academics, but also learn how to take care of one another in five. We've been updated on protocols, requirements, and normalcy, and we are all very sharing ideas with one another. Help me imagine how we don't be treated with delivery and instruction, and address the many academic, social, emotional needs that students would likely bring. As long as the county, the state, federal government, and the district protect us.
Checking livestream, checking livestream. Double check on livestream sound.
Checking livestream, double checking livestream.
Checking livestream sound. Double check on livestream sound.
Checking livestream, double checking livestream.
Checking livestream sound. Double check on livestream.
Checking livestream, double checking livestream.
Checking livestream sound.
Okay, can they try it now?
Oh wait, can you try it now? Will you try it now? Okay.
Livestream audio check.
It's better.
Livestream audio check.
Okay, it should be fine then, I think. If, if, I'm trying to get it back up. Okay, do one, do another check now.
Do it one more time, do it one more time.
Livestream audio check.
Livestream audio check three. Okay, Patrick Kelly and Dr. Brian, I think we have it fixed. Can we try again? Thank you.
At this time, I am actually going to start the meeting from the beginning. And I'm doing so because we want to make sure everybody's comments and everybody's heard and everybody's issues are heard and that everybody gets a chance to partake in this meeting. I am told that we still have a small echo. And if that's something, it's getting better, but I'm told we still have a small echo, Rebecca. But I will slow down and move forward and hopefully we can get it resolved. So this time, again, I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education to order for our special call meeting on Thursday, July 30th, 2020. We're just checking. All right, we're starting to get messages that things are better and that we can proceed. So again, I just called the meeting to order. And at this time, I think it's very important, as I stated earlier, that we take a moment of silence and ask for prayer and thought as we move forward in these important decisions that affect not only Lee County schools, but our entire community. This time, if you bow your heads for a moment of silence, please. Amen. We will restart our public comments. I will take the time down as we move forward. Again, once we reach our 30-minute time limit for the public comments, if we still have more, we will need to entertain a motion from the board to continue our public comments. One thing I'd like to point out, one of the reasons that we are meeting virtually is that we can only have 25 people together in a room due to the Phase 2 requirements. But by having this meeting virtually, we're able to include the over 250 people that are listening in with us and over the 1,000 or so that were at our last board meeting last week. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Andy Brian to start our comments and take the down, the time down as at 5:17.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And as I said, or I apologize if I mispronounced anybody's name, but we will step in and see if we can start this over again. Amy Rosser, 2104 Wolf Trap Place Sanford. Have you thought about the mental health of staff who can't work at the virtual school and are being forced to go back into the building where they don't feel safe? As a school counselor, how am I to provide support and do my job well while remaining six feet apart from a student in crisis? Has the mental health of students been considered? This will not be school. They will not get to play with their friends and embrace their teachers or share a meal with friends. I understand it's important to teach in person, but this isn't teaching like it needs to be. It will be nearly impossible for a teacher to ensure all students are following the guidelines to be safe while teaching them all from six feet away. I struggle to think about how my own children will enjoy school when all the parts of the of school they like will no longer be there. Hands-on experiments, engaging in role plays, singing, playing games, working in partners. I beg you to please consider Plan C. Thank you. Gwen Babcock, 2306 Brownstone Drive Sanford. This year, I will begin my 31st year as an educator, and I am proud to work at the elementary school that made me fall in love with learning and gave me the desire to become a teacher. Deeper River Elementary School. I have to say that I'm so proud of my school and the leadership of my admin there during this crisis. I've been working a few hours in my classroom, but my principals, along with our all-female custodial staff, have done all the heavy lifting, literally and figuratively. They moved all extra desks, tables, and chairs from each classroom and even went as far to space the remaining 12 desks that required six feet. Yes, there's a lot to put away, cover up, but just seeing my room set up for social distancing helped me envision myself and my students in that space. The space where we will get to know one another, form friendships and bonds, learn a lot of academics, but also learn how to take care of one another in this new environment. We've been updated on the protocols, the requirements, the new normal, and we are already sharing new ideas with one another how we can be creative with delivery of instruction and address the many academic and social, emotional needs our students will likely bring. As long as the county, the state, the federal government provide us with the necessary protective equipment and clean supplies, as well as follow through with enforcing masks and social distancing requirements, we can do this. Please give us the chance. Please keep Plan B in place so that families can choose the best learning environment for their children. Rebecca Walters, 3317 Cemetery Road. I'd like to thank the board for your unique solution to Plan B and your desire to address the educational needs for students in Lee County. I believe Plan B gives a good starting point during these uncertain times as a way to move forward. When COVID-19 first arrived in the area, there was much fear and uncertainty of the unknown among healthcare workers. But as time has passed and new policies and routines and safety checks have become the new normal, the fear and anxiety have been reduced and a feeling of empowerment that we are serving our community has replaced that. I pray the same sense of peace and fulfillment comes to your staff. Thank you to the teachers and staff that are stepping up ready to make this the best unconventional year ever. I have total faith the Lee County teachers will exceed our expectations and make social distancing learning fun while still in the classroom. As a parent, I support you and hope that there will be ways for parents to help and support you even if not in person due to guidelines. Thank you. Lori Johnson, 313 Foggy Bottom. I work at a school. I miss our kids. However, I still cannot wrap my head around ignoring or in going back to school in a few weeks. Hospital admissions are still going up, and just over the last week, we had 100 more cases in Lee County. We can't strip our rooms bare, but I don't, I still don't think the plan is realistic. There's nothing I want more than to be back in that classroom with our children. I want to teach without a mask. I want the children to not have to wear a mask as I know the distraction that is going, that it is going to cause. I want to be able to get close to the, to the wind, close to them when they need it. When most of counties in the state are doing remote for at least a few weeks, I believe if we should also wait at least a short time to go back so more of our questions and concerns can be answered. This is new for everyone, but there are still so many unanswered questions. A bus driver having to do temp checks while admitting the kids in the bus is not safe. Driving that bus is enough responsibility. I really appreciate all of you for the job you're doing. My hope is that you will revisit this plan and decide to do remote teaching for at least one month or the end of the first quarter to iron out the answers to educators' questions. I currently work in an EC classroom, and we do not know how any type of social distancing is going to take place in there or how we're going to teach. I trust you look out for the safety of the staff and the children. Thank you for your time. Sarah Griffin, 808 Fifth Street, Sanford. I know the opposition often speaks louder than supporters, so I wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you to the hard-working team coming up with a great solution to a difficult situation. I am so relieved that my children will have the opportunity to go back into the classroom. For my family with two working parents, the alternative to no in-class school is daycare. Plan C would present us with a huge financial burden and environment for our children which is arguably less safe than school. While I appreciate the opportunities given to families to choose C, for us, it's not a viable option. Thank you for giving us the choice to send our children to school. From Ashley in Sanford, I beg the board to keep both options for parents regarding virtual or school-based. I'm a single parent who works full-time, and my children need the school environment to learn. I don't have the time to teach them from home. Amy McLemore, 5396 Carbiton Road, Sanford. I feel like this plan is complicated and will not work. I was on board with Plan B until I read it in full. I chose to have my children attend virtually. Have you polled parents on this? The majority of the school systems across the state are starting the first quarter online. With numbers still increasing, why are we not doing the same? I feel like there should be a different application for those families who have no option and need to go to school and maybe accommodate for those people. Edward Thomas, Lee Avenue. I'm extremely nervous that Lee County seems to be the only surrounding county going back full-time. Wait more, Cumberland, I'll go virtual or two days on. Curious to why this is. Candace Cochran, 163 Woodwedge Way, Sanford. Other counties have recently begun their on-road drivers' education portion. Cumberland, is Lee County working on reopening this as well? And if so, any expected start date? Thank you. Jennifer Ashley, 2596 Steel Bridge Road. Please ignore this if it's duplicated. I'm not sure if the other submission went through. Good evening. I know you're going to be making a hard decision. It's not going to make everybody happy. I just pray you make the right decision. Since your last meeting, other counties have since released their plans, and I must say we need to reevaluate. My child has cried wanting to go back to school, see friends, and have normalcy. But the big question is, are we ready for that? Seeing how more counties doing the split tracks allow kids to slowly get back to normalcy, this would be ideal. However, it would take some work to make sure that families with multiple kids at one school are considered to put them on the same track. The others, Chatham, they're delayed, they've delayed school and are doing virtual for the first four weeks and reevaluating, which I think is a safe and ideal way to approach school. We all want our kids to be back in the classroom with friends and learning, but we need to look at it from the child's standpoint as well as adults. Would the child be comfortable in the classroom? Would the staff be germaphobes and freak out at the very thing touched? In which case, will be the worst, worse on the child than they're going to be afraid to do anything. Me personally, I vote for delay it four weeks, work on the AB track, and then go back in groups. Jessica Hockaday, 248 Sunrise Drive, Sanford. As a parent, I am grateful for the option to keep my child home through the Virtual Academy. As a friend of some of our teachers, I am thoroughly concerned about their health and whether they will have the option to work from home if that is what's safest for them and their family. With all the safety guidelines for cleaning and sanitizing, will the school be providing the staff with all the resources they will need to keep everything clean? Or will they be out of pocket for the staff? Does the school district have enough bus drivers, substitute bus drivers, and substitute teachers for when people are out sick? Do we have enough nurses to be at school every day and that school is open? Does a teacher have to use her sick days if they are forced to quarantine due to a COVID-19 exposure? And what happens if that happens more than once? I believe starting the year off virtually for the first six to nine weeks to work out any kinks and watch how the virus is spreading would be the best option. Shannon Buchanan, 2190 Cleveland Circle. I hope Lee County stays with Plan B. I have an essential worker, I have been an essential worker every day since the pandemic started and taken precautions and see approximately 150 new people every day. Why can't precautions be put in place and teachers go back to teaching? Shouldn't that be essential? I put my family at risk working in healthcare, but I do it because I don't like my other option, which I will be replaced if I don't go. Lee County has given parents options. If you don't send, if you don't want to send your child, then don't. As a place of employment, if you are telling people schools will be open, then teachers can choose to either go back or find other employment like everyone else. Chris Hickman, Sanford, North Carolina. I want to take a moment to express gratitude for your leadership, courage, and unwavering commitment to the children, educators, and administrators of Lee County Schools. The votes to cast Support B last week bucked the status quo, delivered options, and made Lee County the envy of surrounding communities and a potential model for others. You should be commended for the level of transparency promoted throughout the process as well as the factors considered to arrive at that decision. While the plan selection was a critical decision, executing that plan proved to be the most difficult. I am prayerful. You will continue to ensure all support elements are available to those on the front lines of executing the 2020 Reentry Plan. Your most valuable resources must have the tools to accomplish the mission. Ashley Fling, 202 Randolph Street. Do you think all students and staff should be tested for COVID-19 before school starts? Melvina Hester, 3205 Mentor School Road. My grandson has Down Syndrome. He will not wear a mask or stay six feet away from people. I don't think special needs school should open. These kids already have health problems. A nine-year-old just died from the virus. I put in for virtual learning. I have health problems, and my grandson does. Sandy Shover, President, Lee County Association of Educators, 2730 Waters Edge Drive. Lee, NCAE, has been making an effort to gather as much feedback as possible from stakeholders surrounding what would be the greatest priority in reopening, having clear and well-communed policy in place. We presented a petition regarding these priorities to the community and shared an infographic along with feedback to the board and publicly on social media. I urge you on behalf of the 168 people represented in the response, not just Lee, NCAE members, but other staff, parents, community members, and even students who responded, to take these things in consideration. Ideally, adjustments will be made that we can support. Transparency is playing, and planning is key, along with flexibility and the willingness to involve stakeholders. Our jobs as educators make students' safety first priority. Therefore, we call on the board to help us do that. A rush to reopen for in-person could have devastating consequences. We want to have students in the buildings, but until details have been worked out, reopening under Plan C is the safest option. Terry Holt, 199 Ralph Moore Road. Hello, board members. I'm an elementary teacher here in Lee County. I want to say thank you for your hard work and listening to make such a difficult decision for our school system. I want to go back to school and the kids need to be in school. However, I feel that it's in everyone's best interest to begin remotely and transition to Plan B in the weeks to come. I want to be able to go back under Plan A. I just can't imagine very young elementary students sitting in a classroom that is very sterile and socially distancing all day. I've taught school for 29 years, and I just don't see a win with this situation. Please consider us transitioning to Plan B in the, in the weeks to come or a shortened day of in-class for the little ones. They could finish part of the day remotely. Thank you. Jamie Savage, 3029 Brandy Lane, Sanford. Who will be teaching virtual school if we choose to go this option? Will be local teachers or an online academy of teachers from somewhere else? Sherry Jones, Friendship Drive. As a teacher and parent of a Lee County-aged child, I do not support reopening our schools with Plan B at this time. According to recent data, this virus does not show signs of slowing. Instead, thousands of people are becoming infected daily. We, as a community, have a responsibility to take every precaution, precautionary step possible. It makes no sense to put anyone at risk until there's been adequate progress made to slow the spread of this virus. Regardless of our differing opinions on this matter, I ask the board to please consider the health and safety of our community and make that the priority. Mary Long, 240 Wildflower Drive. I am a teacher at Southern Lee High School. I am concerned for the safety of my family, my students, and their families, and our community. Despite social distancing measures, sanitation efforts, and staggered attendance, the likelihood of transmission of COVID-19 has increased due to the large number of variables that Plan B requires, even when compared with Plan A. Some variables include but are not limited to shared facilities, common workspaces, movement around the school, and contact with students and other staff members. These variables only compound the already high probability of exposure to COVID-19. I am concerned that the implementation of Plan B will destabilize the family unit, overwhelm, overwhelm students and staff with challenging expectations, and increase the risk of exposure to COVID-19, all which will negatively impact student achievement. I am asking for you to care deeply about the safety of our students and staff as you consider how these challenges will affect our community. I recognize that Plan C comes with its own unique set of challenges, but is a safer option for the health and well-being of our community. Until the data reflects that COVID-19 is no longer a threat to the student and staff safety, Plan C is the safest plan for reopening our schools. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to express my concerns about the upcoming school year. Jenna Sanders, 913 Creek Haven Drive. I teach high school math in Lee County. The current plan for high school students is for them to go one day a week while high school teachers teach four days a week in person and provide 100% of virtual instruction. So the other four days, students aren't there, we will provide them with instruction. That is eight days of work, and we only have seven days in a week. This plan is telling high school teachers to put themselves at risk of exposure dozens of times a week since they will see their students each week, while also doing two jobs for the price of one. I consider myself pretty good at logic and math, hence why I became a math teacher. And this plan does not make logical or financial sense. The only decision that teachers get to make in all this is the choice of whether to stay or go. And that is insulting when we are directly impacted by decisions we are not compensated for the risks and workload. I am impolting you to let the high school students learn from home since they need, don't need childcare, and let high school teachers provide good online instruction for them. The benefits of students going one day a week are negligible, and you will lose teachers to other counties who have safer plans and more reasonable workloads if you keep the current plan as it is. Jen Krawinski, 1635 Pickard Road. I am a teacher at Southern Lee High School and recognize a tough decision this is to make. I'm certainly glad I am not the one who has to make it. Selfishly, I want nothing more than to be in the classroom face-to-face with my students. But as someone who's been directly impacted by COVID-19 more than once, I've seen firsthand how quickly it can turn lives upside down. Worst insurance for your own health is the fear that you have exposed a loved one, and I do not ever want to feel that guilt again, nor have anyone else feel that guilt. Regardless of what decision is made, I will comply, but safety aside, the logistics of Plan B, no matter how well-thought-out it is, do not make sense. This situation is temporary, and This situation is temporary, and the best temporary solution is to start the year with Plan C. I know this will be an inconvenience for some, but it far outweighs the inconvenience of having a loved one contract COVID-19. That being said, I take my request for Plan C a step further by asking that we commit to it for at least a semester to prevent disruption of a routine and to make sure that our schools are ready to be reopened. Given the COVID-19 metrics and data could warrant another total shutdown of the state by already having established Plan C, our students, staff, and parents will be well aware protocol without the hassle of making another giant switch to remote instruction. I understand the concerns for the students' well-being. I am very concerned for them as well, and Plan C is the only way I believe we can truly protect them. Thank you for your time. Spender Delvecchio, 3208 Willinmere Drive. As I look at the Apex Learning Curriculum, I did not see an option for honors classes, only the AP and regular classes. How will the children already enrolled in honors classes be handled if this curriculum is adopted? Thank you. Adair Thomas, John Rossar Road. Good afternoon. I would like to thank Dr. Bryan for meeting with my school and addressing questions and concerns. As an educator, I still feel safe going back under the conditions of Plan B that have been outlined by Dr. Bryan and his team. I will go above and beyond to make my students feel welcome and keep them engaged in learning to the best of my ability under these circumstances. There are students who were not successful various seasons this past spring on the remote-only plan. Please continue to allow parents a choice to choose in what meets their child's needs, either face-to-face or virtually. For some students, being in class is their only safe haven. Thank you. Spencer Adams, 235 Spring Lake Drive. I am Spencer Adams, and I am a Spanish teacher at Southern Lee High School. I am writing to you because I am extremely concerned about the passing of Plan B. Specifically, I am concerned about my health and that of my family. My parents are in the at-risk population and helped me to take care of my one-year-old daughter. I believe that more adults and students will be exposed being in our school under Plan B than if we were going back with Plan A, due to the fact that middle schools would be in our building. I've been diligent about social distancing and feel that I am being forced into a situation that makes me uncomfortable. To clarify, I believe that Plan C is the only viable option in order to protect staff, students, and their families. In addition to my discomfort about this plan, I'll be displaced from my classroom in order for the middle school to be in our building. I'll be forced to rotate classrooms with other teachers, and will have contact not only with the high school teachers and students, but also seventh and eighth grade teachers and all of their students. Seventh grade will be in my classroom five days per week, and the eighth graders will take the other classrooms on Mondays. We'll be forced to go to work on Mondays with no space to be in. We will actually be in contact with more people by the end of the week than we would during our regular time. I plead with you, please take this information into consideration when evaluating the amount of risk that the people of Lee County could be put under. I am fearful in these uncertain times and ask you to reconsider the safety of the people that you protect. Jenna Sanders, 913 Creek Haven Drive. I teach high school math in Lee County. The current plan for high school students is for them to go one day a week while high school teachers teach four days a week in person and provide 100% of virtual instruction. So the other four days students aren't there, we will provide them with instruction. That is eight days of work, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I believe I've read that one before. Fred Stratford, 802 South Parkway. Would the be information on curriculums for both regular high school classes as well as Virtual Academy? Would the Plan B high school curriculums only include core classes? Matthew Upchurch, 883 Blackstone Road. Would school year change second semester? Cassie Blakely, 1003 Mentor School Road. Thank you for your hard work. It shows in the Plan B that you designed. Please continue to support returning to school under your Plan B option, as it allows those who prefer virtual to do so, but also allows others who so badly need to be back in class to do just that. Reeanna Stevens, 424 Panners Place. I have so many unanswered questions about how this next school year will look. We're closely approaching the start date and feel unprepared to send my child to school. How would WB Wicker ensure social distancing? Are additional teachers going to be at this school and whether spaces within the school be used as classroom? My son was there last year and there were over 20 children in his class. I really wish there were, would be additional information by each school so parents can make informed decisions. I cannot make the decision without proper information. I understand that there is a, there is the Virtual Academy, but I want all the information to make the best decision for my child and our family. Thanks. Sherry Jones, Friendship Drive. As a teacher and parent of a Lee County school-aged child, I do not support reopening our schools with Plan B at this time. According to recent data, the virus does not show signs of slowing. Instead, thousands of people are becoming infected daily. We, as a community, have a responsibility to take every precautionary step possible. Makes no sense to put anyone at risk until there has been adequate progress made to slow the spread of this virus. Regardless of our differing opinions on this matter, I ask the Board of Police to consider the health and safety of our community and make that the priority. Paola De Abia. As a parent, I am very concerned for my daughters to return to the school. I do not understand how it would be safe for a second grader to go to school without a mask when everyone else around them is wearing one. How do we maintain social distance among the young when that is what they miss the most? If my child gets COVID, that means that, means that so will I as a caregiver. And who will maintain our living then? My other daughter is an eighth grader and she will be at the high school for one day. How is that beneficial for her versus online schooling? How would having one child being in school all day, every day, and one child once a week uncomplicate my children's care situation? Bringing the students back to school poses a higher risk of COVID-19 exposure. What if numbers increase again and we run out of sanitizers and toilet papers like it happened before? Why is communication with school so vague? Why are we not pursuing Plan C like other counties and states and then transitioning into Plan B? I am also a teacher and I do not feel comfortable with the extra duties being assigned like taking temperatures or covering for someone who has been diagnosed with COVID. I live with people who are high-risk of COVID, and bringing home the germs from two different schools jeopardizes safety in our home. We've been guarded since March and now we are being fully exposed. How is it that none of the staff is going to be tested for COVID prior to starting school? Are we using the correct air filters in each classroom to avoid the spread of the virus? How are we safe at school when everyone's wearing masks, which makes it harder to identify an individual? We already have hoodie and cap issues. Have you...
I'll take another five-minute recess. And when we return, Board members, obviously, we're not through the 30 minutes yet, so we'll go ahead when we come back and start with a motion to extend that. We'll be back soon.
We'll be at 30 minutes.
Live stream audio check. Livestream 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 audio check two. Livestream audio check. Livestream audio check two. Patrick Kelly and Dr. Bryan.
We are back up.
We are back up and running. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Livestream audio check.
Thank you to everyone who is going through this with us tonight.
Livestream audio check two.
At this time, I'm going to make a motion from the Board to extend our public comments for another 30 minutes. We are back up.
We are back up and running. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we...
All right. Thank you to everyone who is... All right. I have a motion on the floor to extend our public comments for another 30 minutes. We'll have a second.
I'm also a teacher. 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 I'm also a teacher.
Livestream audio test. Livestream audio test, take two. 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 Checking sound. Patrick Kelly and Dr. Brian, we're back up and running. Let's hope it stays running this time.
All right. Before we move forward, I want to make, I want to make a statement and, and put this out there. That this decision is so important to me, Dr. Brian, and the Board of Education. That if we have another issue, that I am going, and I've consulted our legal, our school board attorney on this, that I am going to recess this meeting. And we will reconvene Monday at five o'clock if we have another issue. That is because this meeting is extremely important to me, Dr. Brian, and this whole school system. And we take it very seriously, and everybody's concerns and discussion is very worthy to be had. So at this time, we're gonna go again. Dr. Brian, it is now six, sixteen. And we have thirty minutes of public comment before us.
Hey, holiday of the year, one-two-zero, Pine Valley Lane, Sanford. I'm also a teacher, and I do not feel comfortable with the extra duties being assigned, like taking temperatures or covering for someone who's been diagnosed with COVID. I live with people who are high risk of COVID and bringing home the germs from two different schools, jeopardizes safety in our home. We've been guarded since March, and now we're fully, being fully exposed. How is it that none of the staff is going to be tested for COVID prior to starting school? Are we using the correct air filters in each classroom to avoid the spread of the virus? How are we safe at school when everyone's wearing masks, which makes it hard to identify an individual who already have hoodie and cap issues? Have you weighed the risk of COVID-19 transmission in the high school with more traffic of people versus other concerns? Like the students' mental health and educational needs? We know that students and staff get COVID. We know that they can get it multiple times. We know that people can die from this. So why are we so pressured to make it happen with the same timelines as a regular school year? When it is not a regular school year? Why are teachers not being heard when we're expressing true concerns? Does our life not matter? Julie Randolph, three-four-zero-five, Windmere Drive. The vision of Lee County Schools is to provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. As a high school science teacher with Lee County Schools for the past twenty-nine years, and current chair of the Science Department at Southern Lee High School, I am always guided by this vision. After listening intently to the entire July twentieth LCS board meeting, actively participating in a dialogue about the details of Plan B on July twenty-ninth with my colleagues and Dr. Brian, and communicating directly with the members of my department, it is clear to me that Plan B cannot be safely implemented at the high school level at this time. I highly recommend the board vote to begin high schools, high schools under Plan C for the first nine weeks of the 2021 school year. Under Plan C, I'm certain I and my colleagues can provide challenging learning experiences for high school students, without putting students, staff, and community members at greater risk during the current stage of this pandemic. Furthermore, Plan C will actually allow more time for student instruction and effective planning by eliminating time spent by teachers on COVID screening, enforcing social distancing guidelines, sanitizing classrooms, supervising other teachers' classes, and other tasks required to effectively implement Plan B. In keeping with our shared vision to provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment, the only logical option is to begin the school year under Plan C. The academic benefits of in-person instruction in small alphabetical groups once per week are simply not great enough to risk the health of high school students and staff and our Lee County community at this time. Thank you. Stacia Brink Kutrumpis. I am a student, I'm a teacher at Southern Lee High School. I submitted a public comment that was read at the last Board of Education meeting, but I feel the teacher's voices were not heard that evening. In that comment, I expressed my concerns and fears about returning to the physical classroom. I continue to feel that the only safe way to instruct students is virtually, under Plan C. When you consider the details of Plan B for seventh through twelfth grades, all teachers of these students will be exposed to more people than we are during normal times. Over a five-day week, we'll be exposed to all of our students plus the two other grades, or vice versa for the middle school teachers, and all of the other teachers. During normal times, I do not stand close enough to students that I will be able to measure their temperatures and monitor for signs of illness. I do not touch their lunch trays before or after they eat, or even come near them while they are eating, as it appears will need to do under Plan B. Obviously, students will not be wearing masks while they're eating in the classrooms. Under Plan B, we will, we will all be displaced from our classrooms. We will all have to share teaching spaces. Sharing with several other teachers and their students exposes us to yet more humans who could be carrying the virus, and allows us less control of the physical space. Due to this sharing, we will need to travel between rooms between classes. This puts more people into the hallways. We will also be responsible for cleaning the classrooms, classroom that we are leaving, monitoring student traffic as we travel, and we will not know what has been sanitized when we arrive in the next classroom. It also cuts down on the amount of student supervision that will take place between classes. With this cleaning and monitoring, very little time will be spent on actually teaching and learning. Plan B offers one day of teacher contact per week for eighth grade and older, with much time spent on cleaning and monitoring. Plan C will offer three to five times that amount of contact and instruction with no safety issues for teachers or students. My fear and anxieties about returning to school started when the governor announced that schools could choose Plan B or C. They increased when the Board of Education discussed Plan B at length, and then had a very short discussion on Plan B versus Plan C, ultimately choosing Plan B. I've had, I've had many sleepless nights and many waking moments of anxiety when I think of the implications of this plan. As other North Carolina counties, including several that border Lee, have opted for Plan C. I wonder with dread why the board members of Lee County feel that it is safe for our students and teachers to return under Plan B. I fear going back into the classrooms in any format, but increased exposure to many others, in addition to the decreased time for learning that Plan B provides, is very anxiety provoking and worrisome. Plan C is the only feasible option in the current state of the pandemic and the latest metrics of our area. Kelsey Crowley, two-six-one-two, Taponah Circle. I am a teacher at Southern Lee High School, and my son is entering the second grade at J. Glenn Edwards. As a parent, I do not understand how you have enough teachers to have K-seven students at every school every day and have them socially distanced. Classrooms are already somewhat crowded. How do you intend to space children out with the same amount of staff? I know part of the answer is the virtual academy in the hope that enough people will sign up so students in school can be socially distanced. But how will you keep those young children spaced out and keep masks on? I'm sure how many, I am unsure how much learning will be going on versus how much of the day will be having the students fix their masks, maintain the six feet, wash their hands, having their temperatures checked, et cetera. I've signed my child up for the virtual academy, but have not received any information or contact regarding this. Wouldn't your parents expect to hear information about this academy as school starts in roughly two weeks? As an educator, I have many other concerns about Plan B. I take care of my elderly parents who are high risk, and I would love to have an option like students to work remote, remotely and protect them. How are my high-risk family members being protected under this Plan B? I have an autoimmune condition that puts me at a moderate risk for this virus, but there have only been options laid out for high-risk individuals to work remotely. There are no good options for teachers who need to remain home under this current Plan B, and I feel like this is something the board should address. I also feel we need to reevaluate what is happening in our high schools. We'll be having more students in our building than before, and this has displaced many of our high school teachers. These displaced teachers are now being forced to move around the school building all day, effectively increasing the risk of exposure, what is being done to protect these teachers. We do not need to put our staff, students, and community at risk just to have students in the building for one day. I feel I could form better relationships and have a better understanding of my students if I could see them virtually every day versus seeing them in person for one day. I want the best for my child and for other children in our community. I want to be the best educator I can be and do what is best for my students. I don't feel that is possible under the current Plan B. Thank you for your time. Austin Johnson, Petty Road. My main concern since your opening of schools, when a child has COVID-19, teacher has COVID-19, when they return, are they going to be, going to be backlash, mistreated, and bullied because of they, because of they had COVID-19? It's already a cruel world. These teachers are going to put their health at risk, and child need to learn. So how are we going to handle something if a child gets backlash? I've seen it from adults and not children being rude and disgusting over this COVID-19. Remember, we did not ask for this COVID-19. So how are you going to teach children if you cannot let teachers be sixty from our kids? My child is one-on-one learner if he doesn't understand. Barbara Sessons, one-two-nine, Willow Ridge Drive. Please allow for both going back to school and virtual learning. As a frontline work, both my husband and I, we need our children to go back to school. They've been in daycare this whole time with no issues and want to go back to class. Please make the parents aware that if only, if only offer virtual classes, how long these kids are expected to be on their computer? I think many of these parents think their children are only going to be in virtual class for one or two hours, two days a week. CD says to send them back to class. I've seen the comments pushing for all virtual, and either, either these people don't have children in school, or I've personally seen them out and about in public with their children with no mask on. Parents also need to be aware that these teachers can see the children taking tests without, either the parents doing it for them or telling them the answers. The kids are getting further behind. Stick to your guns. You've given people a choice. The CDC is backing it. Please don't go to all virtual. Please let all virtual learning parents know what they're signing up for. Thank you. Meta McKeon, three-seven-three-one, Woodside Drive. Thank you for choosing Plan B. I'm sure it was a difficult decision, but it works best for everyone. If parents want to send their child to school for various reasons, such as being a central worker, can't work from home, their child might learn best in actual class. They might not have internet at home, or they have a bad home life, and their kid's only saving grace is attending school. If someone doesn't feel comfortable sending their kids to school, then they can choose the virtual option. I hope the principals and teachers make it fun, exciting as possible for the kids while following the new guidelines they've been given. Some kids need to interact with others, and some learn best with one-on-one interactions, not a computer. There will be challenges and uncertainties, but I'm sure everyone is willing to work together to make it a great year. Karen Kidd, three-oh-eight, Hilltop Road. For the upcoming school year, I have a freshman and a senior at Southern Lee High School. The virtual academy was developed, and parents that knew that was the right choice for them signed up for the virtual, virtual before the BOE even voted for the plan for the county. I greatly appreciate the board voting for Plan B because it gives me the option to choose what is best for my family. My kids want to be back in school, even if it's only one day a week. I've looked at the risks and benefits of both, and I know that Plan B is the best option for my kids. I hope that Plan B remains an option for Lee County Schools. Thank you. Jessica, five-oh-eight, First Street Broadway. What is the plan if a student or teacher test positive when the entire class shut down? Thank you. Amy Allen, Tambin Lane. As a teacher, I am concerned there is not enough time to implement plans required to open schools safely and effectively. As a high school teacher, I'm concerned about the number of people who will come into contact within one week. Let's say I have five students per block, three ninety-minute blocks per day. A different set of students Tuesday through Friday. That could be sixty different students who have, who all have unique class schedules that pass through my door each week and I am responsible for cleaning and sanitizing for. On top of the classroom sharing and extra dues to ensure supervision of all students throughout the day, please consider Plan C for all high schools for the first nine weeks. Joannie Deasien, Ciencia. Thank you, Dr. Brian and the School Board, excuse me, one-thirty, Raccoon Court. Thank you, Dr. Brian and the School Board, for continuing to assess our changing COVID-19 environment regarding school openings. With that being said, I have concerns about opening school August. In meetings I've attended, I've heard too many times, we will address that, or we're looking at that. To be blunt, we are way past that point. In order to open safely, all procedures need to be in place. Please consider remote learning for the first nine weeks so all the necessary safety procedures can be addressed and implemented. After that point, we can hopefully transition to Plan B. Jackie Watson, eleven-seventy-five Steel Bridge Road. Hello, my name is Jackie Watson. I live on Steel Bridge Road. I'm an educator in Lee County School System. I am always, I have always been outspoken and forthcoming in my approach. I've never written a letter before. I was always one to allow the BOE to make decisions that affect my day-to-day life for me as an employee. In the past, the decisions made did not affect my home life to the extent this decision had. Five days until the start of the calendar year, and your current decision will affect whether my family members become, became ill and possibly die from something I have no control over. In healthcare, everyone adhered to a standard and was trained to the same level I was trained. In public school, this is, this issue, there is no time to train or prepare adequately. I'm not presenting data or statistics. I'm speaking from the feeling, perception side of what is presently occurring within our community and homes. When I was hired with LCS in two thousand, I was leading a nursing career with twenty-one years of ICU and home care, health experience, healthcare experience. I knew my job and responsibilities very well. I was good at what I did. However, I changed careers because of family needs. As I entered the field of education, I felt alone, unprepared, and I was fearful of the unknown. I felt that way once before as a new RN graduate, and a wise supervisor said, "To make you a great employee, we're going to invest in you," and they did, and I was. My first day of teaching, I remember nothing else, not what the lesson plan was about, the number of students, or even what happened throughout the day. What I do remember was that I, is that what I had prepared was supposed to take ninety minutes, and I was finished in forty-five. Now what was I supposed to do? No one had prepared me for this. My voice was shaking, and I was scared to death. I remember telling the students a definite no-no, that I was learning with them. And if they would help me, I would repay the favor and would help them. I invested in them, they invested in me. I have taught that way for twenty years. We reap what we sow. As we approached this school year, there are many unknowns and many, and many, if not all of us still unprepared. When I taught nurse aide students, I taught and trained them for the worst-case scenario. That way, if they confronted on the very first day, they're scared to death, they were ready, and I was there with them. As a teacher and nurse, there are several things I am unsure of. Many of my peers and colleagues do not have my background or healthcare training, and they have multiple concerns about how this year will look. My other concern is addressing the learning curve for all students, teachers. In the first five days of school, many high school teachers have set up their Canvas accounts for the first time for deep, three different preps for the fall semester. They're also having to learn what their role will be in cleaning, screening, testing, questioning, separating the room of supplies, sharing with others the classroom, removing personal twenty years of stuff items, all within a five-day timeframe, and having to meet the opening school requirements. meet the opening school requirements before students come onto campus. The scenario for the high schools under Plan B will be extremely difficult to prepare and maintain with the questionable outcome that students, staff, and families in our community may contract COVID. Over the last twenty years of my career, I've continued to learn as I teach. I've learned that there are several types of leadership styles, though none are bad. Each has a specific place to be utilized as a benefit. In emergency, the autocratic style is very useful. Democratic is more flexible and changeable. What I teach my students is, is to sign of an effective leader, make sure all persons first understand the goal or mission of the team and that there is effective communication. To be effective, one must be willing to listen to others on the team. Listening and hearing make the goal obtainable. Creation of a team means that we allow each member to have input and feel needed and heard. The team is best in members that help to make the goal real and reachable. Granted, they're always negative nellies, but when allowed to be heard, most people resolve their anxieties and work towards a solution to be the problem. As a leader and decision-maker for LCS employees, you all have been given the task of making decisions for our schools and community. I'm asking each of you to listen, hear what the people are saying, afford the possibility of virtual learning now, moving hybrid learning to a later date when all staff had had a chance to be trained and prepared for what was happening around them. Agreed, some will never feel adequately trained. Those are the ones that sometimes have to be pushed. We have a great staff, all at different places with different backgrounds and life experiences. Each brings a different perspective to the table, investing and educating the staff makes them feel heard and valued. Isn't that what we want for our community? Doesn't that show that we're investing in them and supporting them? Isn't that what we would want for our children if they worked for LCS? A good leader can adapt to change if it is for the betterment of staff and the community. They're not afraid to be the first to try something different, even though the others don't agree. I implore you to reconsider your vote, listen to the people of the community that are teaching the community, invite them to be on the team in the decision-making process, and then train, 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 retrain to prepare them for the worst. If we overtrain them, they are prepared, feel valued, and best of them. They will give you their best and be great supportive employees. In closing, I invite you to hear and actively listen to your community and teachers, those in the front line. Follow the behaviors you want them to display, put them on your committees, allow them input and solution, invest in them, support and train them first. They would give back a million, a million fold. Ashley Campbell, Harvey Falk Road. I want my kids back in school for many reasons, but I do not think going back full-time is, but I do think going back full-time is a little much, especially wearing a mask. I wear one at work and it's really hard. I can't imagine these little ones doing it all five days a week. I work in Moore County and really like what they're doing. Two days on for what Group One clean Wednesday, then Group Two goes Thursday and Friday. That gets them back into, in, but also gives the parents a sense of safety. Nancy Wayland, two-six-one-two Suppona Circle. Please reconsider an air on the side of caution by making all students virtual for the first nine weeks. My daughter's a teacher. My grandson's a rising second grader at Jaqueline Edwards. There are too many logistical challenges to be navigated to allow a smooth opening next year. Slow your roll and make a better plan to ensure the safety of all, please. Mary White, one-five-zero-one Patterson Grove. As an educator, I have concerns with the district response to Plan B. Not only has the district been able to answer many of the voiced concerns, not only has the district been unable to answer many of the voiced concerns, the answers teachers have received paint a picture of an ill-conceived dream. There are not enough staff members to meet the metrics Governor Cooper has laid out, and despite what I am sure of the school's best efforts, contamination is simply impossible to avoid. We should be spending a limited amount, the limited time before the school year starts prepared for Plan C as an outbreak is inevitable, besides the obvious health risks Plan B presents. I truly believe the instruction will be more effective in all virtual environments, particularly for high school students. The benefits of in-class instruction are non-existent with the Plan B guidelines and do nothing more than put everyone at unnecessary risk. I urge everyone to take a second to visualize how they see the average school day in a high school to function with the current plan. It should not take long to recognize the obvious problems such as where are the students going to be when the students are sanitizing? How will students have access to water? Water fountains are essentially Petri dishes. Who will cover classes when teachers are out sick? What are the students doing on the days that they do not have any person's class? How do they keep them accountable? And with all the moving parts, when will teachers have adequate time to plan? These same issues have led wake and durum to make difficult decisions, switch to online classes, and I believe it's time for Lee County to follow suit. Marcia Hudson, eighteen-o-one Carpenton Road. Hello, I am Marcia Hudson and a teacher with Lee County Schools. Staff, students, and community will, will get sick with current Lee County Plan B. Fevers are not the only indicator of infection. Thirty percent of cases are asymptomatic, and people do not show fever while still being a carrier. Therefore, checking daily for fevers of students and staff are an ineffective measure of whether someone has contracted COVID. Data, July twenty-nine, twenty-twenty. A new federal report published by New York Times has found that twenty-one U.S. states are in the red zone, more than a hundred new cases for a hundred thousand people in the past week, ending July twenty-four. This list includes North Carolina. Recent New York Times article about South Korean study of sixty-five thousand people, students between ten to eighteen years old can carry and contract the disease the same as adults. Situations and questions. Teachers and students sharing classrooms. Teachers will be clean between classes. No time for transitions next class. Who will do holiday to make sure that social distancing is in effect? Who will make sure students social distance in the bathroom and wash their hands? Sharing a classroom will increase surface area contact and potential infection. Students and staff may be allergic to cleaning materials. How would that be handled? Masks have been optional, non-existent for spring and summer for students. How will we set consequences for students who refuse to comply? These students will be disruptive, increase administrative duties, and possible infections. How will we deal with parents who back their children in non-compliance? Quarantining will happen. Will we be expected to work during quarantine? How will student absences be affected if sick? How can we be assured that infected individuals will quarantine? Staff and student extended family getting sick, will a teacher be given sick leave to care for a family member who contracted COVID due to Lee County policy? Will we need quick testing for suspected sick people to make informed decisions? Running multiple buses to get students to school? How many runs will they have to make to get all the students to school by the time school starts? What time will students have to get up to get ready to get on, get on the bus? Are bus drivers trained for the, trained for these procedures? Surfaces in the classroom, school building, wiping down all surfaces, water fountains, door handles, and student bathrooms, teacher bathrooms, et cetera? Would this happen constantly and thoroughly? Since paper can be a carrier, shouldn't all work be digital? Therefore, go virtual for all. Since paper can be a carrier, excuse me, shouldn't all work be digital? Therefore, go virtual for all. If students will eat in classrooms, how will teachers have their guaranteed lunch breaks? Wavers do not hold up in court. What is the protection of the Lee County BOE and teachers for potential lawsuits? Plan B requires a lot of moving pieces, people, putting people in potential harm in order to get a few students into classroom once a week. Mary Cox, Sanford. Dear School Board, I'm a parent of two students in Lee County Schools. I'm extremely concerned that a plan was approved without you requiring specific details regarding safety procedures. I understand that Lee County Schools has an enormous task ahead, but you are asking me to blindly trust that some faceless, nameless person will make decisions that will protect the health of my first grader and incoming kindergartner. I have no control of these decisions, but you do. And elect, as elected officials, I look to you to ensure accountability and quality control of decisions affecting my children, not to just passively agree to a generic plan that provides no specific details in regards to class size, lunch, bus procedures, et cetera. Every parent in Lee County deserves to know precisely what school day looks like from the beginning to the end for students that are face-to-face. While there is a virtual option, I can't even sign up for, for that because I have no idea when students are expected to be in attendance live. Chris Gill, two-five-four-three Buffalo Road, apartment two. As a resident of this county for five years, I'm continually in awe of the absurdity of the decisions made by the supposed leaders in this county. As a teacher, I am disgusted by the disregard the school board seems to have for the safety and health of the teachers in our schools. The plan B adopted by the school board is in fact in violation of the criteria outlined by the governor is yet another example of the last-minute thought that typifies, typifies the way this county is run. Instead of lowering the number of students and teachers in any action schools, your plan has in fact increased the number of students and high school teachers, the high school teachers will be exposed to. Of course, the attitude of this county is usually, well, suck it up. This is how we are going to do it. And in most instances, teachers have been great at adapting. Have, teachers have been great at adapting and making more work with less. This instance, however, is far too much to ask of teachers in this county. You are asking us to disregard our own health for some imagined notion that forcing children back into schools without a fully developed plan is better for their mental well-being than cautiously and safely returning to school with a plan. Once again, teachers' lives and safety are an afterthought. We are people as well. We have lives outside of school as well. We're willing to bend over backwards for our students, but we are not God. The level of expectation put upon teachers is beyond reasonable, and the fact that this school board continues to disregard our thoughts in order to look good for the community further demonstrates how undervalued we are by the leaders of this county. People who are continually undervalued are not likely to stick around. Stacy Noonan, Sanford. Making any decision about schools reopening is difficult. However, the current Plan B as designed does not consider the safety of the students or staff. The levels of disruption to lives of all involved or the impact on learning. With the increase, with increased movement and numbers of bodies in our hallways, people will contract COVID. Social distancing is nigh impossible, and students do not understand that they will not be allowed to socialize per usual. Too many factors are uncontrollable within a school building simply because staff cannot be everywhere. With so much movement and extra steps of temperature-taking, sanitizing concerns, and monitoring halls for masks in addition to normal duties, disruptions cannot be kept to a minimum. Our days will focus not only concerns and worries about students' learning, but rather on whether we have distanced enough and sanitized enough. Unfortunately, all of these factors will impact learning. With Plan C, while not a deal, disruptions and worries for safety can be kept to a minimum. Teachers and students can focus on learning rather than the plethora of other concerns and problems that Plan B creates. Please reconsider and implement Plan C. Lauren Maynes, two-four-five-two Bella Bridge Road. The teachers in this county are scared, myself included. You're asking us to not only put ourselves and our students at risk of getting sick, but our personal families and our students' families as well. I myself have asthma and have stayed, stayed away from everyone during this time. What other precautions are going to be taken for teachers at a higher risk? Tell us we can apply for the Virtual Academy and be isolated is nonsense because we may not have a job to return to after the one-year contract. Teacher voices are being heard but not actually listened to, it seems. At the high school level, we are not going to be exposed to even more people due, we are going to be exposed to even more people due to middle schools coming in, new students, teachers, admins, TAs. It isn't a matter of if people are going to get sick, it's when we're going to get sick. What's going to happen when teachers die from this virus because you made us open too soon? When our family members die because we were forced into school too soon and brought the virus home to them, what about students that get sick and have to miss so much school? Will you pass them or hold them back? Plan C protects more people than Plan B ever will. All the safety precautions can be followed and people are still going to get sick unless the county is prepared to buy everyone a bubble to walk around in. The superintendent kept mentioning that in tonight's meeting, all the metrics be looked at to see if the decision needs to be changed. Seriously? Is that the only thing that is looked at to make this hard decision? Teachers' opinions don't mean anything. Parents signing their children up for the Virtual Academy because they're scared to send them back doesn't mean anything. Again, as teachers, we are scared. We are being asked to wipe down our rooms and supplies after each class. How much valuable instruction and time will we lose to not give within six feet of our students? How can we help them with drawings or help tie their shoes? To teach face-to-face and virtually, that's doubled the workload. I teach art and have five preps just the first semester. Go ahead and change that to ten since I'll be teaching online as well. There have been so many questions unanswered and questions continue to pile up in every day, every hour. Yes, every school has held a virtual meeting with superintendent, but we feel nothing's actually been answered. We're only a couple of short weeks from the start of school. During a normal school year, we are stressed and running, running is done before the first school day. Now it's even worse, anxiety levels through the roof. We're losing sleep over this and don't understand why Lee County hasn't decided to be cautious and go virtual. You're about to put hundreds of people in danger of getting sick when this all can be avoided. We are not guinea pigs. To say, we'll say, we'll see how it goes, extremely wrong, humane, and downright evil. How many school board members will be seen in the school building once school starts? What about our superintendent? Will anyone from central office step inside the school building after we've just had another spike? I repeat, teachers are scared. We feel Plan B puts more people at risk. There are too many questions still left unanswered, and this virus doesn't discriminate any age, any race, any gender. We are all at a huge risk. We're not prepared, we don't have time to prepare, and there will be many people getting sick. Please consider us, don't throw the metrics at us. We're not a number, a collection of data, and we don't, we don't want us, our family, or our students to become a statistic of the virus. Thank you. Amy Cross, three-zero-eight-two St. Andrews Church Road. I've been an educator for more than twenty years. I've enjoyed the successes, like when the child struggles all semester and pulls out a B on their final, when a parent emails you to tell you how comfortable their child that deals with anxiety is in your class, or when that student that struggled through middle school was sent to alternate school but made their way, their way back, comes in your classroom after the final bell of their high school days to shout, we made it. I've also suffered the failures, like when you just cannot reach that student no matter how hard you try to show them you care, or when a student commits suicide and you feel so guilty because you had no idea how badly they struggled. When a student suffers the loss of a parent, your heart breaks for them, or the numerous students that you teach come to school hungry and tired, and you wonder what they will do over Christmas break or summer break. I would bet that every educator in Lee County listening or reading is shaking their head and thinking of the specific students that they taught who fit these profiles. I can say that because that is what we do. We teach, we study, we differentiate, we do all those things that state requires, but more importantly, we listen, we care, we pray, we feed, we love our kids, our students. Many of them, many, many of us lose sleep on a regular basis because we're concerned about a student or their family. We pray for them, we try to think of ways that we can do it better, ways to reach that one student, and we do this because this is what we love. And because we love it, and we love our students, and we love our work, families, and we love our community, the proposition of going into a situation, environment that is potentially to put so many in danger is daunting, is the most daunting challenge of my career. Because of Lee County School Board, many of which I have known personally for many years ago, to move to Plan B for coming year, I'm faced with the challenge of keeping all my students well. I'm faced with the reality that I don't keep students distant or sanitize my room correctly or make them keep on their mask that they could potentially die, or the family members could die. That is not hyperbole. This is the reality, this is the reality that teachers across the county are faced with. We want to go back into our classrooms. We want to see our students. We want to start the school year looking at them in the eye and showing that we care and are advocate, are their advocate. We want to enjoy the successes, but we also want to experience the failures that come because that is what we do. That's what, that is what we do. That is what I do. However, I do not want to go back into the school board and put so many in danger till Plan B is thought through more clearly. To all the questions about logistics are answered until more time is given to see what this virus is going to do. My concerns about returning to a classroom or not because I am lazy or because I don't care. My concern is because I do care. Please vote to transition to Plan C to begin the school year. Meredith Ward, three-three-seven.
Dr. Brian, we need to take another vote to extend another thirty minutes at this time. From what I can tell, we don't have that many left, but at this time, I entertain a motion from a board member to extend public comment for another thirty minutes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of extending our public comments by another additional thirty minutes? Same as saying aye?
Aye.
Alrighty, this motion carries and we can finish up. Thank you, sir.
Meredith Ward, three-three-seven Brookfield Circle. Good evening, I'm a teacher at Southern Lee High School. Going back to school buildings in any capacity in just over two weeks is an unwise choice. Aside from the obvious health and safety risks, there are what feels like hundreds of unanswered questions. I am sure all Lee County employees feel similarly. How are teachers supposed to effectively prepare for Plan B when the logistics of it are still being sorted out? How can teachers effectively teach when we are also expected to sanitize constantly? How can we effectively teach when anxiety levels of both students and employees are through the roof? Lee County employees are more prepared for Plan C because we've already done it. Please not risk the lives of employees and students just for the sake of putting students in the building. How can Lee County protect its employees and students more than other North Carolina counties that have opted for Plan C? Thank you. Todd Murray, 3219 Whipper Street. A simple request, survey the staff of LCS about how they feel about returning to school with the current information that we have. Also, why are the results from the former survey no longer available to be viewed? Vicki Wilkins, 957 South Bay Drive. Good evening, Chairman Kelly, Dr. Brian, and members of the Lee County Board, School Board. As you revisit Plan B this evening, I alone and my colleagues at Southern Lee High School urge you to consider starting school with a virtual plan for all students. Our thoughts about returning with our students raised several questions, and when we were informed this week, we should be sharing classrooms, sharing workspaces, moving instruction materials on the cart during class changes. How many times will we change classrooms in a day? Our anxiety levels were off the chart. We've, we also have to share our building on Monday with seventh and eighth graders and staff members from San Lee. Where is our safe space in the building that day? There's a very tiny bit of assurance being in your classroom in a pandemic where social distancing, sanitation, sanitation and mask wearing is taking place. It's another frightening thought to go in and out of multiple rooms and hallways, especially when we realize the importance of not traveling all throughout the building. We have a colleague at Southern Lee who's been quarantined at Fort Bragg for 16 days due to his contracting the virus during the National Guard training this summer. Out of 120 guard members, 115 developed the virus. He shared the National Guard had the very best PPE that which healthcare professionals wear. Their sanitation standards, their small groups, which were more than socially distanced while in a classroom, he felt great about the training. He described the virus as unbelievable, and he cannot believe how sick he was considering his great health. We do our best to ensure that students are safe and feel safe in our classrooms every day. Every family in Lee County is expecting the child they send us, every family in Lee County is expecting the child they sent us that day to return safely home. Can you guarantee parents, students, and educators that we will be, all be safe from this virus? Returning to school is on Plan B. Let's go virtual and return to school when it's safe. Christopher Rissler, Sanford. As many teachers have surely commented, we are scared to go back into buildings for what seems like very little benefit. The Plan B we're to follow will increase our risk of contact for most high school students and teachers as well as seventh and eighth graders. Students get very little out of seeing us teachers in person one day a week and that they would not, that they would not get seeing us every day while teaching virtually. They also will probably not see their friends at school since they are coming to school alphabetically. As someone who is high risk to die from this virus and who is married to someone who's also high risk, the fact that we are pushing this forward with tremendous risk to us and our students with very low upside is just devastating to me. Worried seems too, too small of a word for how I feel coming back and endangering not only my life and my wife's life, but the life of all my coworkers and all the students who are going to walk through those doors as well as all their families. Please reconsider Plan C. Gwen Williams, 2681 Hickory House Road. In just a few short days, high school teachers in Lee County are being asked to do a job for which we are not trained. There is no doubt that the high school teachers will complete the task, but at what cost themselves or family members and their students. As a seasoned veteran of 23 years, I've experienced most loss of life over these years. I've lost numerous family members, but most devastatingly, I've lost many students. Over the years, I've lost students to brain cancer, the flu, lung disease, suicide, drug overdose, among other things. I can honestly say nothing is more heart wrenching than losing a teenage student. This is my main concern for starting schools on the proposed Plan B. I am afraid for my life, my students' lives, and our families' lives because of COVID-19. As a teacher, I am not a medical specialist in any way, shape, or form. However, Lee County teachers being asked to provide medical services and make medical decisions about students. This is dangerous and risky. According to the numbers, research data, et cetera, students in the high school population are just as susceptible to COVID-19 as adults. How in good conscience can a teacher be asked to enter the classroom with these students? Once exposed to COVID-19, how will react if one of our students dies or a family member dies because of our exposure in the high school? Just one death is one too many. I'm the only living child my parents have. They are in a highly susceptible group, and I am as well. The U.S. Members of Lee County BOE think sending us back to school face-to-face is the best choice for everyone in the county. From the bottom of my heart, I feel like this is the most dangerous thing we could do, given the number of cases in the county. As a group of people dedicated to improving the lives of our students, please consider opening Lee County Schools under Plan C for the first six weeks, especially in the high school setting. Stephen Roman, 387 Hollybrook Road. Thank you to the members of the Lee County Board for prioritizing the education of our students as well as the health and safety of everyone in the Lee County School community. As a Lee County high school teacher, I recommend Lee County Schools begin the school year on Plan C, moving to Plan B when the metrics demonstrate a decrease in Lee County's infection rate. In the July 18, 2020 Sanford Herald, Lee County was identified as having the fifth highest rate of infection in North Carolina for the coronavirus. Of the eight highest, eight highest counties listed, five had adopted Plan C to begin the school year. One county has moved the start date of school to September 8th under Plan B. Two counties under leave adopted Plan B with caveat that a move to Plan C can be made if necessary. One Lee County School's board member observed, "I think everybody agrees face-to-face learning is the most effective way to teach our children. Please understand this will be mass-to-mass learning at a distance of six feet while both students, teacher and student spend a great deal of mental energy worrying about contracting the virus. Is this the most effective way to teach our children?" Some people cite the success of other countries in reopening schools. However, the Kaiser Family Foundation reports, "While, quote, while other countries that reopen schools have generally not experienced outbreaks in school settings, almost all at significantly lower levels of community transmission than the U.S. in greater testing and contact tracing capacity." The safe and responsible decision for Lee County Schools is to reopen under Plan C. Thank you for your dedication to the health and safety of all in Lee County Schools. Includes that, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your commitment to reading all of those, and I guarantee you, this Board of Education truly does care and wants to hear every concern and issue. And I know not only do we have that many public comments, we've all received plenty of emails, so we're truly being transparent and we welcome all concerns and comments. At this time, I want to move to the approval of our agenda, but I do need to make one mention that we need to strike the personnel close session from our agenda. So I will entertain a motion to approve our agenda as presented, but striking the close session personnel and actually the new business personnel as well when we come back in. So I will entertain that motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Alright, alright. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as is presented with the amended motion. All in favor, same with saying aye?
Aye.
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 Alright, our agenda stands approved at this time. Moving right along to our first item, which under new business is the discussion for our reentry school plan for Plan B. At this time, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am following up from our last meeting. You wanted, requested a follow-up discussion about Plan B and wanted to make sure that we were tracking the latest data. I felt like one of the best ways to do that was to ask a couple of our experts to come in and share that. Obviously, the latest COVID-19 data trends in our county are really important for us as we monitor this. I've asked Heath Kane, Lee County Health Director, to provide the latest updates. And before he begins, I just want to thank Heath for all of his hard work over the past five months to protect and support our community. He, he's done an awesome job, and we have a great partnership with him with our school district, and he's always available and always there to support us and provide advice. He's done a fantastic job. I also asked Mary Holly Oates, our supervisor of school nurses, to be here as well tonight to talk, and I've asked Heath to, to provide us with his assessment of where we are with the latest metrics, and I'll just turn it over to him with your permission, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to echo some of the same sentiments. I know the last five months, Dr. Brian, myself, and Ms. Mary Holly have been speaking with Mr. Kane quite often, and I'd like to turn the floor to yours, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I do want to thank Dr. Brian and Ms. Mary Holly for allowing me and the board to come this evening and to say a few things about where we are, the community, and the cases we're seeing right now, and the dynamics since Monday's press release went out. I do want to share a couple of numbers. Some of these numbers can be found on the DHHS website. We just wanted to be aware, we, we track these numbers pretty closely and, and look at what we're seeing as far as percentages, as far as number of cases per day. And I do want to give you a little bit of data, and you may be following this on your own, but over the last seven days, July 24th until today, on the 24th, we had nine new cases of COVID-19. On the 25th, we had 11. The 26th, we had 10. On the 27th of July, we had 21. The 28th of July, we had 19. The 29th, 14. And today, 16 more cases, which gives us a total of 1,127 cases. There are some we are no longer monitoring, as you were. I think that number, I've got it on my phone, and I think it's 930 that we are at now. But just a few more numbers on that data that you're looking at with DHHS's site. What jumped out, I know the board, Dr. Brian has mentioned it, and the board members have seen it. I know the information there with the state average of ages 0 to 17, 11% as far as positive cases. The Lee County average, as listed on DHHS, is 13%. And I do, we do see that a little bit as a little higher number than the state average. We are tracking that. I think that on March 15th, we had our first case and, or the week of March 15th, and for a week or two, it was one to four to nine, and then we had quite a few more. I will say that the state has provided us a little more data towards the end of this, towards where we are now, which we weren't getting on the front end. Mainly, they give us an estimated number of tests that have been, have been completed per week, and they give us a number of positive cases that have come back for that week. So we have seen, we were seeing a steady trend of cases percentage lower around the middle of June, and the, I think it started around steadily trending down. But last week, we saw an uptick in the trend, and this week with the information, we're seeing an uptick once more, a little less than the week before, but we did see an uptick in last week's data. We are watching that closely, and we are just going by guidance from DHHS and with Dr. Brian's assistance and Ms. Mary as far as talking through this and, and reviewing the information. I know the government, the governor has given you choices as far as Plan A, B, and C, and I am more than happy to help with sharing what we've got as far as data and information goes. He's given three direct plans. I know there's opportunity for each, and I know there's interest in each, but I'm all for trying to make a plan that the Board of Education sees fit to move forward. I'm all for trying to help get that put in place and help any way we can from the Health Department.
Heath, this is, this is Andy. Could, could you speak a little bit to, I know we talked about CDC guidance in reference to positivity rate? And I know there's some, some, some reference to CDC and 5% and 10% positivity rate within counties? And could you tell us where we are with that?
Well, the, as I said earlier, we were trending down probably till last week of June, I think we were down close to 7% with our cases, which that trend was like a five-week trend line. And I think Dr. Brian mentioned, I have not seen it directly, but I have been reading through it again to try to find it, but I think the CDC recommended 5% or less open schools back. I've not seen that directly, but I know that that's, that's where we are currently. In these last two weeks, we've seen right at 16% with positive cases that have come
And, and I think, going back to what you said, Heath, with the, the CDC guidance that came out last week, there was a little bit of a discrepancy, I think, between, I think one CDC official, Dr. Redfield, I believe referenced 5%, and the Surgeon General referenced 10% positivity rate. And, and just for everybody's knowledge, can you just repeat what positivity rate is?
The positivity rate is the number of cases that were positive based off the number of tests that were done for that week. I will provide some clarity because there has been a little bit of confusion amongst some of the calls we've received. If a person tests positive in April or May and they need a negative test to go back, to go back to work, if they test positive one more time, they are still only considered one case. So there is no second positive, there is no third positive, they are just one person. So as of this evening, 1127 is 1,127 individuals that have tested positive. There may be, there are some that have tested more than once positive, but that is the number we have currently.
Thank you, thank you, Heath. And I know Mary Holly Oates, our supervisor of nursing, who I think everybody knows, has been, has been working very closely with Heath to track this information. I'd like to just turn it over to her to, to kind of compliment and share what, what all that means.
Thank you, Dr. Brian and Chairman Kelly. As we began our COVID adventure, I'm being nice about that, back in March, we worked very closely with the staff at the Lee County Health Department to advise us and to help us monitor the infection within our community and directly the infection concerns with staff and students of Lee County schools. We have watched as our county's rates have soared with clusters of cases in processing and manufacturing plants. We have seen large numbers testing positive when the first of the drive-through testing sites were held. I have personally reached out to Health Department staff at night, Friday nights including, on the weekends, as we would hear of our staff that were possibly exposed or testing positive, so that we all did what we could to keep everybody safe that was within our reach to, to do so. When we met with Mr. Kane before presenting our Plan B proposal to the Board of Education, the positivity rates for Lee County were trending down. The rate that week was 7.7% and trending down. So we were quite surprised when we talked to Mr. Kane the first of this week to find out that our rates from last week had doubled to 16.8%. In that 16.8%, there was not a major outbreak at a congregate facility such as a processing plant, nor had there been a large drive-through testing event. To me, that said, that increase in our positivity rate must be from community spread. As I looked further into the data, I remained concerned about that the percentage of those testing positive in Lee County who were 17 and under was doubled out of the national average. Our rate has been steadily between 12.5% and 12.9% of 17 and under testing positive when the national average is 6.6%. Dr. Redfield of the CDC stated recently that a positivity rate of greater than 5% would be of concern for schools to reopen. The Surgeon General spoke of a preferred positivity rate of less than 10%. Dr. Mandy Cohen of the North Carolina Department of Health and Union Services also spoke to a 5% positivity rate as a threshold for concern on reopening schools. Whether you accept 5% or 10%, we are above that and actually have been that, that way above that since the 1st of April, except for the two weeks where the trend, where the rate was trending down. I'm also concerned about having enough staff to cover our schools. I am the point of contact for when we find out we have staff who are testing positive or have been exposed or have symptoms. So I am daily doing contact tracing for staff members who are either currently working or will soon be working in our schools as they have those symptoms or expose to folks who test positive or who themselves test positive. If you're exposed or you test positive, you must quarantine for anywhere from 10 to 14 days, possibly even longer. If you go get a test because of questionable symptoms, you will still have to quarantine until you get those test results back, which sometimes can take up to 10 days. And again, will we have enough staff on our campuses to supervise and and teach our students if our community spread continues even at this rate? Much less gets worse as people are out and about and possibly exposed or in the classroom and exposed despite our best efforts to safeguard everyone?
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Holly.
I want to say thank you to Heath for coming and sharing with us the information, and also Ms. Mary Holly as well. I want to make sure all the board members can still hear us because we're be moving into a discussion, and make sure everybody's still there. And while we're waiting to make sure everybody's still there, I'd like to ask Mr. Love, is, with all this new information and the guidelines, your opinion per se when it comes to the guidelines that the CDC has put out? And what guidelines we need to move forward with?
Well, the problem is that I was in a meeting with the school board attorneys from all over the state, and, and we were getting new information during the two days that we were meeting daily. And really, it puts, puts the school board in a real bad position as far as planning. And, and there's a lot to be with this plan that you have. You have some legal exposure that you really need to consider. And that has to do with your special needs children, which presents a big problem. And you have the health, the health and safety of both the faculty and the students. And you've got many, many problems with the high-risk employees under the ADA. You've got to make accommodations if you have a high-risk employee. And you also have the problem of working compensation if somebody does get sick. So there are a lot of legal problems involved in the plan. And, and it's one the board should know about. And not only that's not my conclusion, that's the conclusion of most of the attorneys we were talking to.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to ask for your feedback. I mean, because those concerns need to be addressed as well, and then especially refer for a lot of our staff tonight, but I want to ask Dr. Brian to provide the feedback he received from our staff this week through all the staff meetings that took place.
I, I met with the school staffs at all 17 school sites. And I'm going to try to some, put a summary on this if I can. If I could just sum it up in a few words, obviously, we've heard from them tonight, and I think they, they've spoken certainly for themselves to explain how they feel. But I, I think the vast majority of our staff members are certainly very anxious about reopening with in-person learning right now and with, under the current pandemic conditions. They're concerned about accelerating the spread of the virus locally through children that they teach and the families those, those children will go home to. I think they're also very concerned about themselves and their own families. And there is a great fear about opening schools and the impact on the health of the entire community. I also heard that in spite of all the concerns that are out there, they expressed, certainly, they're going to work hard to make whatever plan we open with under successful. But, but underlying all that, there's a great fear of the unknown within our staff. And a desire to move very slowly as we reopen schools.
All right. At this time, I want to make sure that all board members are back. I mean, we've heard from Dr. Brian, and we've heard from our, from guidance from outside. At this time, I will entertain a motion from anyone on the board to further discussion on Plan B or any other motion. Ms. Womack, I don't know if you're still there, but we're getting ready to get started on discussion.
I'm here.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to make a motion that the Lee County system, uh, school system begin the fall semester of 2020 using Plan C as outlined by the governor, and that we revisit this decision in six to nine weeks.
All right. So Dr. Smith has made a motion that we move to Plan C and do Plan C for six to nine weeks and revisit in that timeframe. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, before a second is made, is there a time for discussion or?
Mr. McCracken, as soon as I get a session, a second, the floor is open for discussion.
Thank you.
I second it with the discussion.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor and a second that we move from Plan C, I mean, from, excuse me, from Plan B to Plan C for six to nine weeks. At this time, the floor is open for discussion. And I will like to start off with Dr. Cobal, if that's okay with you.
Uh, yeah, and I just, I don't want to rehash everything we've had tonight, but I have several concerns on here. One is, it's just a practical decision that a couple of administrators have said they would not be able to start up because there's a shortage of teachers who would show up. And that's, with all the things that have been said tonight, that's understandable in one aspect because there is a fear among a large population here in the county. The second thing is, on, on my emails, and I don't know how everybody else was, but with my emails, the majority of my parents were for opening and, and for opening schools. Whereas the majority of the teachers who responded with emails were for going to Plan C. Some of the concerns that were expressed was the virtual learning, it means less learning. And quite frankly, if you're not in the classroom, when they're not watching you, they're watching cable, whatever. And, and audio and visual learning is great as when you're augmenting a subject, but it cannot be the, the main thing. Two, even among those with teenagers, they express concerns about their children being left at home all day. Three, the obvious thing to me as a teacher and to a lot of other folks is quite frankly, your classrooms are generally cleaner than most environments that a teenager is going to hang out in. Now, that's just my opinion as a teenager, but it's also my opinion as a parent of three kids that used to be teenagers. There's an income impacted across the county because a lot of folks are not going to be able to work if they have their children at home. That's one of the things noted over and over in my emails. And the last thing I have, and I suppose, Mr. Kane, you did such a wonderful job a while ago, and I love those stats that you gave. I loved having some numbers that I can hang on to when we're going through this. But the, the last thing that I have on here is there's some folks have simply speculated that having children isolated for months at a time from daily contact with their peers, they will lose some of the immunities that they have built up over the years. And when we do start back in classroom situations, there will be an onslaught of contagious things that they will bring home that they've had before, but had built up resistance, and now they've lost it. Those are basically the things that I was concerned about, and basically the things that folks contacted me about and wanted to know. That's all my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Womack?
All right. I have a question. You're saying the, and correct me, just help me to clarify this for everybody. It keeps it real simple. CDC guideline says that if we're greater than 10%, that we should not be back in school. Am I correct?
Mr. Kane, I'm going to let you go first.
I have not seen that specifically, Ms. Womack. I think Ms. Mary Holly found that exact statement. I have not seen that footage myself.
Okay, I would, I would like to see the statement. I think that's important for all members of the board. My second question was the, just earlier, someone stated that we have been above 10% since the 1st of April. How could that be that our board would not realize that we are above 10% and even start to discuss Plan B?
I'm going to let Ms. Mary Holly respond to your first two questions, okay?
Thank you.
First of all, we can give you, Dr. Redfield of the CDC, that was part of the discussion, a presentation that he made, so we can certainly provide you with that information. The Surgeon General said his part on, I think, a Face the Nation presentation. Dr. Cohen has stated her 5% in a, one of the many question and answer presentations she has made. As far as above, looking at above 10%, when we were looking at this plan, we had begun to trend down, as Dr. Mr. Kane has already spoken about. And if you look at the data, at that, the positivity percentage, it was trending down from week to week. And then, like I say, when we were meeting to, to put Plan B in place, we had gone down from 19 to 12.7 to 10.5 to 8.1 and 7.7. So when we made the presentation, or Dr. Brian presented Plan B to the board, we were making a trending down at that point. But then, first of the week, we'd go back up to 16.8. So that was a concern that the trend was going back up instead of continuing to go down.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to say, for me personally, as a board member, had we been given that information, that would have made a world of difference. Because then we would be spending more and more time focusing on what we can be doing as far as Plan C. Initially, what we have done since March is we have failed the citizens of Lee County. There's no one that can say that what we have done was successful with our children. So now this has caused more chaos, more discord within the community, because I don't think there's any board member that I'm sitting here watching, had they known those numbers and the implications behind that, there would have never been a discussion. I don't believe there would ever been a discussion on Plan B. So now we have, now we're left with, we have community. We have several emails and messages that come from the teachers because of their concern. But we also have citizens in the community that's saying, we're paying $10,000 per pupil. We got nothing last year. You've got parents who are upset that saying, what do we do? We understand they're not at daycare. We don't expect them to be at daycare. We expect them to be professional, come to work and do their job. When in fact, these teachers have some legitimate concerns that have not been addressed. That seems to be the common theme behind all this. And I know this is just a discussion. I'm just trying to point out some of the things that have came to me. For instance, I go out today for the rehabilitation clinic where they do physical therapy, and I'm bombarded with no less than 10 people saying, this is the greatest plan they've ever heard of, was the plan that Lee County is doing because it gives a choice. But if I'm hearing you correctly, unless someone can explain it another way, there's not really a choice. We're being, we're, we're having to follow various guidelines from DPI, CDC, the governor as well. So is there even an actual choice between Plan B and Plan C?
Uh, yes, ma'am. There is a choice. And as Ms. Mary Holly pointed out, that we were trending down. And the governor and the law stated that we had to have a Plan B and Plan C. I do take a little bit to note that, to say that our staff has not worked hard through this summer. And they have worked hard, and you said it yourself at a very board meeting, because you said Plan C was thorough. And they have worked hard, and we have both plans ready to go depending on where the board voted or where the governor made a decision to go to. Yes, sir.
Just add a caveat here. The CDC guidance, I believe, came out last week.
So the CDC didn't even issue the guidelines until last week when it comes to the positivity rate?
And CDC, CDC has made some, obviously throughout this whole process. And understandably, there are lots of things people learn about this all the time, and guidelines change all the time, and we all, we all know that. So but those CDC guidelines were released, I believe, at the end of last week with the 5% as Dr. Redfield talked about. And then the Surgeon General came back and talked about 10%, and I'm not sure about Dr. Cohen. I don't, I can't cite the date on that. But as we, we met with Mr. Kane, the Friday before the Monday board meeting. And at that meeting, we talked about the downward trend of, of the rates, and he was cautiously optimistic. Is that, is that a fair statement, Mr. Kane?
Yeah.
Optimistic and, and felt like we were trending in the right direction. And he reviewed our Plan B. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Kane, but I think you felt confident in where we were with our Plan B at that, at that time. Is that a fair assessment, Mr. Kane?
It followed the governor's orders, and there were pieces in place to make, ensure the safety and the protection of the staff and the children. I, I like the dynamics that were set up in it.
Thank you.
But now, that is no longer, now that's null and void, am I correct?
As, as, as we, as we know, with this entire pandemic, and I say this until I'm probably people get tired of hearing it, things change very quickly, as you know, with all this. And this is just another shift in the metrics and where we are. And certainly, the, the idea of the positivity rate, which as Mary Holly, I think, pointed out, is reflective of, without one single place or event, is reflective of the community spread that, that might be going on right now. Am I correct in saying that, Mary Holly?
Yes. And, and back in April, when the numbers were much higher, we were seeing manufacturing plants and processing plants with large numbers of, of people who were testing positive. We were doing, they were driving, doing drive-through testing. There were events that could reflect why the positivity rate was so much higher. The concerning thing when we met with Mr., talked with Mr. Kane on Monday was that there were none of those, and our positivity rate doubled just over a week's time. That's what caused us to really have to look at this more carefully and then bring our concerns to you as the board.
Which, which, I, I think you, you all had certainly anticipated this, the potential for changes. Because when you all approved your motion last, last Monday, y'all put in the rec, the requirement that we would come back tonight to review the metrics. And certainly, I know as y'all were making that motion and approving it, you certainly understood, as you were making that motion, I, I think, my assumption here is that things change with this pandemic, and they change very quickly.
All righty. At this time, Mr. McCracken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Monday, when we made our vote for Plan B, our cases of COVID were trending down and at approximately 7.7% this week, today and this week. And since then, they have been trending up. I agree at this time that we need to move into Plan C. I will continue to fight and to believe in Plan B unless I can see true results from Plan C, that quality instruction is taking place, and especially quality instruction for those who find success being at school. I'd just like to share a few more thoughts concerning this. And it's, a lot of this is the exact same thing that I have shared with the parents that I've talked to and emailed throughout the last 10 days. First of all, there's a new norm. That new norm is going to consist of face masks, social distancing at schools. It's going to consist of apprehensions and what-ifs. And it's going to consist of extra responsibilities. Unfortunately, these things are not going away, whether we decide to go August 17th, whether we decide to go in six weeks, nine weeks, or January. So I feel very strongly that we have to make sure that quality instruction is taking place in Plan C for all those, especially those that feel in need of school. And just to understand that a lot of these questions that we have and a lot of the to understand that a lot of these questions that we have, and a lot of the questions from the public comments today, those questions are going to still be there, and we've got to, in my opinion, at some point, continue to watch our trends, and if they go down to a percentage that we think is effective to be in school, I will continue to fight for Plan B. A lot of people have opposed this, but at some point, we've got to open the door, and if you use another analogy, we've got to pick up that can we've been kicking and move forward. I'd like to go a little different approach in my final comments tonight, if I may. First of all, I agree that most, agree that most kids want to be back in school. I agree that most teachers feel that they want to be back in school with the kids. I realize staffs have had to make very difficult choices in choosing Plan B, or choosing to go virtual within that plan. And here's where I'm going to, to veer off a little bit different. Whatever you feel is the best way to stop this upward trend of COVID-19, and I'm talking to anyone that's listening tonight, and those that aren't, please pass this along, we must do something to stop this upward trend. If we are wearing masks and believing that, we must wear them more. We must tell others to wear them. If we believe that group settings and group gatherings are causing our numbers to go up, we must begin to lessen those group gatherings. We must do our part to make this trend go down. As well, at some point, we're going to be back in school under Plan B. I would highly suggest and recommend that we take this opportunity for our parents to begin to have discussions of what this new norm is going to look like, by gradually getting their kids to wear masks, to help them to understand what social distancing means, to help them find ways that they could adequately develop relationships with their teachers and their friends while in this setting. As I've stated before, a lot of what is happening is going to, is not going to change when we go back to school, whenever that may be. I feel very confident that our teachers, when we go back to school, will find innovate, find and innovative, safe ways to teach our children and to become more at ease. I know it is a daunting task, but I know that we can do it. Just saying one more time that, at some point, right now, I truly support Plan C, and I will continue to be looking at the trends, and noticing and hoping that they will go down, and they will continue to go down, so we can pick that can up, instead of kicking it, and let's open that door and work hard. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to start off by saying, I think Mr. McCracken had excellent comments and excellent points he just made, and said a lot of the things that have been going through my mind, and I really appreciate that. I do believe that our district came up with an excellent Plan B, and I fully support that plan that they have developed, as far as it being very consistent with data and research as to what works with children and their learning. I appreciate Mr. Kane and Mrs. Oates coming forward and sharing this information with us and explaining about positivity rates. I do believe that was definitely information we needed to hear. It was definitely new information for me, and I appreciate that. I fully believe the best thing for our students, when it is safe, is for us to bring them back in to face, face-to-face instruction. I have a heart for our at-risk students. I worked with at-risk populations my whole career in education, and I have a heart for the students that aren't going to get the home support, a lot of our students that are living in poverty, the ones that aren't going to be given any assistance in virtual learning or remote learning. I have a heart for those students. I'm concerned, because I read yesterday that the CDC has put out an article saying that right now, we have more people dying from suicides and overdoses than from COVID-19. It's very heartbreaking to know these things are going on with our children. We have a lot of children in Lee County that are going to be successful, no matter what we decide as far as whether we go with Plan B or Plan C. They have home support, they have parents that will make sure they learn no matter what. But I really have a heart for those students that don't have that kind of support, those children that aren't going to eat because they aren't going to be in school every day. And I feel sorry that our metrics are such that we're looking at a situation like this and putting them back in remote learning, but I can't turn a blind eye to facts. You know, everything that I've tried to approach with this is to read what pediatricians are saying, read what the Academy of Pediatrics is saying, talk to doctors and find out what they're saying, because we have to base this on what we know about what's going on medically. And so, while I want to see our kids come back into the building, I can't turn a blind eye to a doubling of our positivity rate over the past week and the amount of community spread we're seeing. So if we, if we need to go to a Plan C, I can say that, I can support that, but as Pat said, I want us to keep a close look on this and bring our children back into the building as quickly as we can, in a way that's safe for our community. I did have a couple of questions, though.
Yes, ma'am. Are they for, go ahead.
I just wanted to go back and revisit a couple of things about Plan C, since we have that motion on the board. I know when we went to remote learning back in March last school year, we did not give grades, and the accountability was probably not as strong as maybe some of our teachers would have liked it to have been, as far as holding students to be accountable, to be online, and to complete the work that they're given. Will that be the same if we start off with Plan C this school year? Or will we be able to hold students more accountable and give them grades for what they're doing?
There will be more accountability, there will be attendance and grading that will take place, and I'm going to turn it over to Bryan to finish that statement.
I'm just going to repeat what the chair just said, Ms. Sutton, and with grades and, grades and attendance and accountability there, and I believe that was woven into Plan C, which, of course, the board's already approved.
Right. And that was my understanding, but I just wanted to ask that question and make sure I was right about it and present it for everybody to hear, too, that may be having the same question in their mind.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Another thing, is there any way that, from our school system, that we can have some accountability, or at least something communicated to us as a board and as a community as far as the participation rates that we're having in remote learning? If, if we could do that on a consistent basis, would that be something we could look at and would be possible?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Okay, well, that's all my questions, then. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This COVID-19 poses a real dan, danger to everybody in our society. Matters of convenience pale in comparison to the, to the hazards this, this novel virus presents. And I read from the News & Observer this morning, it says, "Hospital Cases in North Carolina Hit New High." Death toll rises to 45. Forty-five people died from this virus yesterday. So this is not child's play. And, you know, in my opinion, Plan C is the only option I see to avoid an uncontrollable spread of this disease, and we've spent some time here talking about when we can get back to normal, and I firmly believe there's a vaccine on the horizon, and that's the point at which in time, we're going to get back to any semblance of nor, of normality. So Plan C remains my choice. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Vice Chair, Ms. Hilliard?
Yes, after meeting, myself, I'm sorry, Chairman, myself, Mary Holly, Dr. Bryan, and Mr. Kane, we were able to meet Monday, and we talked about the rate of increased rate of positivity, that number doubling. Like they said, you know, when we met on the 20th, the number was a downtrend and it looked good, and that was great, because I was a firm supporter of Plan B, and I continue to be. But seeing the numbers, there's no way that we can, we can open ourselves up to the liability that Mr. Love stated, that we could possibly be, be opening the board up for. So we've heard from, you know, we've heard from so many people, and it's, it's, we've heard from positives and negatives. I know sometimes the naysayers are louder than the positives, but I understand their concerns. They are nothing to be taken lightly. I'm glad so many people reached out, that's what we asked for on the 20th. I, I feel like we really and truly need to, to set a good set of parameters for how we keep up with, not how we keep up with the data, but what areas we look at to determine when we need to go back in. I feel like we need to set a, I know, I know Dr. Smith, or I'm sorry, Dr. Cobble, one, said six or nine weeks. I think we need to give our families, our communities, a firm one or the other, you know, let's, let's pick a good timeframe and go with that, and have a set of parameters, have, look at the metrics of the numbers, the timeframe that you said. And we also, like Ms. Sutton asked about, is the participation, the engagement that we're getting with our children. In my opinion, you know, last year, I'm not looking at anything that we did virtually last year, that was a crisis, that happened, that's done. I'm, I'm, that's comparing, the, the comparison's not there, and it's not fair. So I feel like Plan C, that was written out and that we approved, has wonderful pieces of accountability for, for the, you know, for the teachers, for what they're expected for each grade level, for the parents, for their attendance of different children, different, excuse me, different grade levels. But I do, I do feel like now, as I spoke to, and, and I, I asked Ms. Petraka if I could talk to her, if I could speak about this, and she, she was fine. She is doing the Jump Start program, is overseeing part of that with Greenwood and Wicker students. And she said they have been given multiple opportunities, timeframes of the day to come on, to log on, and the participation has been very low. Several never even picked up the equipment to begin the Jump Start program, and those are some of our more, more vulnerable students that I do worry about, like Ms. Sutton stated. So, you know, like she asked about the different parameters of the engagement, the accountability, and a different way that we can, you know, can we look about, what can we do with all of our staff? I would love to see, you know, I hate for our BTs to start their very first year, especially our BT1s, our very first year, virtually. That is going to be so difficult for them, not having that mentorship piece. So is there something that we can put into place as far as all of our, all of our personnel goes? If we do go to Plan C, what will that do for all of our classified staff? You know, because I, like Ms. Sutton stated, you know, unfortunately, there are so many, so many vulnerable students that don't have the support at home, and, and those are the ones that they struggled maybe to start with, and I don't want them to continue to struggle any, any longer, if we can help it.
At this time, I'm going to ask, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Kane or Ms. Mary Holly, or Mr. Love?
Thank you, Mr. Kane, thank you, Ms. Holly, and Mr. Love.
Mr. Cobble?
I'd like to thank all three of them for being here, and that was very enlightening from Mary Holly and from Mr. Kane, and thank you especially for bringing us up to date.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'm going to provide some feedback in my discussion for this topic. Last week, I stated that I was afraid of a lot of different things, whether if a student or a staff member would come down with this deadly threat. Would a neglected child who stayed at home get more neglected because we're in B? And I can keep replaying everything in my head over and over and over and over again. And I have tried to respond to everybody via email, via comments, via everything, on the street, everywhere. And I keep coming back to three little words. Do no harm. And when you put it in that perspective, I want our children to be in school, I want them to learn face-to-face, I want them to be able to smile and hug every teacher, every custodian, every bus driver that makes a difference in their life. But I want them to have a life that can continue on. And if we follow by what we say, when we even have a weather event, our main goal is do no harm. You know, last week, in an effort to seem together, as much as it was hard for me, I struggled, and still, last week, I was still torn up to the very last minute when I voted for Plan B, and I told it to everyone, I did it so that we would be a unified board and we could work together. I can't, I cannot go any more sleepless tonight, knowing that I may cause harm to a staff member, to a teacher, to a child, or anyone in our community. So that's all going out the window, because I'm going to stick it to it, that we're going to do no harm to any child, and I will vote for C tonight, because I want to make sure that our children are alive when they get back in that classroom. And I want that to be as soon as it can be, and I know our staff is going to work hard to make sure it is. Our staff worked hard all summer feeding children. Our maintenance department worked all hard, getting the schools ready, no matter what option we came back to. Our central office worked hard, and it was on here on the weekends, Mary Holly was speaking to myself and others on the weekends, and Mr. Kane. We have worked hard all summer to make sure that we have both options presented. Our staff is tremendously dedicated to each other, because we're a family, and I don't want to hear anybody say that they're not. Our staff works together, and if anybody says our staff has not done the due diligence, I thoroughly disagree. Our staff has the same motto I have, we do no harm to no one, and we educate the best way we can. I'm going down to roll call, and we're going to vote on this, and hopefully, we do no harm to anyone. Dr. Cobble?
I approve Plan C for the moment. I'd like to have an update on it within six weeks.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Ms. Womack?
I also approve Plan C with the update in six weeks and a little bit more communication within the board members. That being said, when a chair and a vice chair has had these numbers as of Monday, I know it's out of order, but we need, that needs to be addressed, because you...
Pat?
Plan C, Mr. Chairman, with looking at in six weeks.
Ms. Sutton?
I agree with going forward with Plan C and reevaluating in six weeks.
Dr. Smith?
I vote for Plan C, and, and I'm praying for the vaccine.
Ms. Hilliard?
Plan C with a reevaluation in six weeks with the set of parameters that we can maybe set up.
At this time, Plan C passes unanimously. We will move forward our Plan C to start school on August 17th. I want to thank everybody for this hard decision they had to make tonight, for the betterment not only of our school system, but our entire community. At this time, I'd like to move on to item number two, the replacement of the water fountains and water bottle filters.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is the, and Chris McNeil was here, this is the replacement of the water fountains for the water bottle fillers, you all approved this earlier, for a lottery request that was then sent to the board of, for the commissioners, and this is the opening of the bid for that. Mr. McNeil, do you have anything you want to add, or who the, who the bid recommendation is?
The bid recommendation is Baker Mechanical. They came out to be the lowest bid out of the four, and Baker Mechanical did deployment in HVAC work at WB Wicker this past year. And Baker Mechanical did deployment and HVAC work at WB Wicker this past year.
And just, just to make sure everybody heard that, Baker Mechanical with the, had the low bid on that. And Chris, with the work done during business hours is one fifty-nine, seven sixty. And work done during nights and weekends, one sixty-nine, one thirty-five. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And the reason we got the night and weekend bid is because we was going back to Plan B.
Right.
So if we can approve the plan, the higher amount, it will come in as the lower amount. Because if something changes and we do go back to school, they'll have to.
Because they're both firm bids, so.
They're firm bids. And also, everybody is replacing their water fountains. So give them all hundred forty, might take some time too.
Yeah. Obviously, as we explained last time, Mr. Chairman, with the board for safety due to COVID-19 and Baker Mechanical on both accounts was the lowest bidder, right, Mr. McNeil?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there, is there any kind of timeframe? I know it's not an easy question because of the current situation.
Yes, ma'am. They said there was three weeks back order on them, but they are getting some in. So our plan was to start, some of our school has some of the bottle fillers in there. Is to skip around and add like two in all schools at first so they all have some. And then work our way back around of finishing everything up.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Any other discussion concerning our water bottle filters? Here none. I will entertain a motion to approve these. We've already approved before that to put them in. We just need to approve the bid.
I move that we, Lee County Board of Education award the water bottle filler bid to BMI in the amount of one hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-five dollars.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. All in favor, signal saying aye?
Aye.
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 All right. Thank you. Motion carries. Moving around long to our next item, our agenda report for Apex Learning. Dr. Andy Brown, I think you and Dr. Dawson back.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dawson back. And as he's getting ready to get on the line, I think he's, I think he's here. The, this is a, this is an item that we have used traditionally within our schools for several years. But we felt like we need to expand that a little bit, and I'll let Dr. Dawson back talk about that.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Brian said, Apex Learning has been used in high schools for many years as our curriculum for credit recovery. It's a very rigorous curriculum that does align with North Carolina standards. It does provide differentiated support for students based on their ongoing performance. And it also allows students to work at their own pace through various modules. When paired with a teacher of record within the district, it can also be used for students to obtain a new credit. This is typically only used for courses that we're unable to offer due to low enrollment numbers. In the past, we have purchased a limited number of seats available to students in grades nine through twelve. Due to COVID, the company is now offering districts a package that actually includes unlimited seats, that includes courses and tutorials within their entire curriculum that also expands down into middle schools that would cover grades six through twelve. Moving to this limited option would certainly expand the availability of virtual course offerings for all students at the secondary level. These courses could be accessed and would be accessed by students regardless of what reopening plan we are in for the upcoming school year. Even if we start in Plan C, which you approved tonight and move back into Plan B, this, this would still be used and also whether we move into Plan A at some point. With that, we are requesting to expand Apex Learning at a cost of ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, which would provide us unlimited access through summer of 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson back. At this time, once I have a motion and a second, we'll have discussion on this. Is there a motion to approve this request?
I make a motion, we approve the Apex Learning purchased in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, one hundred thirty-seven, twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second, so the floor is now open for discussion concerning this. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Dawson back or Dr. Brian? Dr. Cobble?
Uh, I'd like to know what has been our previous situation with this. How much of this have we availed ourselves of in the past and for what grades? What grade levels?
Dr. Cobble, in the past, this has been available for students in grades nine through twelve. It's primarily been, have been used for credit recovery. For example, if a student failed the course and was in a few points from passing, and we thought it might be detrimental for them to retake the entire course versus doing that, they could take a credit recovery option. That's been used for that. It's also been used in grades nine through twelve for courses that we're unable to offer because of, of low enrollment. An example of that could be an AP Spanish course that you may only have within the district, four and five students enrolled. And instead of telling them, no, we can't offer that course because of low enrollment, we compare that with a teacher within our district and allow them to move through modules online.
Well, Chris, has it been very effective on students that are taking college prep or, or even taking the college board test?
I would say so, yes. I can say from my time at Southern, the program that we had prior to Apex was certainly nowhere near as rigorous. When you ask students, they don't like it as much because it does require quite a bit of work and it is very much like a traditional seated course. So I do think it's rigorous. It's certainly aligned to the state's curriculum. And I do feel like it's a very valuable resource.
What kind of an increase are we talking about as far as the cost?
We are looking at roughly a thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar increase. But when you look at, we were limited to three hundred seats. So we could only offer that to three hundred students at a time. This will allow us to expand that to grades six through twelve and our seats will be unlimited.
Very good. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions concerning our Apex Learning proposal?
Mr. Chairman, this seems like a perfect complement to a system in distance learning. It just opens all kinds of opportunities for our students. Well done, Dr. Dawson back.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Hearing no other discussion, I will go down to roll call for the vote. Dr. Cobble?
Aye.
Ms. Womack? Ms. Womack, are you still with us? We see something in front of your screen. Ms. Womack, you're muted. Mr. McCracken?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Hilliard?
Yes.
Ms. Womack, one more time. Yes?
Each time I click it, the mute button keeps coming back on, but yes.
Thank you. At this time, it stands that our Apex Learning proposal stands approved. Alrighty. At this time, our new business has come to an end. At this time, I'm really trying to find the words to express the gratitude to our staff, to our teachers, to all of our employees who have worked this summer and all their employees who are going to work this fall. No one knows what to expect when it comes with COVID-19. Things change, guidelines come quick. We have to work together. We have to make sure that we prove to all of our kids who see us as role models that we continue to do what's best for them in the classroom and in safe outside. I'm grateful for all the discussion, the concerns, the issues that have been raised. I'm grateful for the hard work from our health department, from our staff, and for the hard work that's getting ready to come before our IT department and the rest of our staff. I assure you that our school system is going to try their best to ensure that the best virtual learning option is out there, that kids are fed still and that their needs are taken care of. We are responsible. We will be responsible. I know because this man sitting across from me, he does not, he does not sleep a day without worrying about how our students are taken care of. And that goes for everybody on this board. We all try to pay attention and I please encourage everyone to stay up, stay informed. And thank you for attending our meeting tonight for the hundreds that did. And I'm Ramon Olson. Please entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So move to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
All in favor of adjournment, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.